We will call the regular meeting of Lakewood City Council for June 5, 2023 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. As is our custom, we will now pause for a moment of silence. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Baker, absent.
Bullock.
Here.
Keppel, absent.
Litton.
Here.
Marx, Rader.
Yep.
Schachner.
Here.
Move to excuse the absence of council members Keppel and Baker.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held May 15, 2023.
Move to dispose without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item one, report from Health and Human Services Committee meeting held regarding meeting held May 22, 2023.
Given Vice President Keppel's absence this evening, I'll move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item two, report from Housing Planning and Development Committee regarding meeting held May 22, 2023.
Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dear colleagues, the Housing Planning and Development Committee met May 22 to discuss ordinance 10-2023 regarding automobile business operations. All members of the committee were present, as were several additional council members, Mayor George, Lauder Rick Vargo, and other members of the administration. The administration presented an updated version of the ordinance, which the committee agreed to substitute as is. The committee was satisfied that the substitute version incorporated good faith feedback from industry professionals and narrowed the focus of the ordinance and impacts on businesses. Council members discussed additional possible changes and sought to clarify what impacts the proposal would have on businesses and the community. The committee heard comments from seven members of the public, including many industry professionals. Feedback regarding the ordinance was evenly split. Some commenters expressed concern about the impact on businesses, and others expressed confidence that the proposed regulations would bring welcome and needed professional standards to the industry. The committee will hold a follow-up meeting on substitute ordinance 10-2023 on June 12 at 6:00 PM. Respectfully submitted. Move to receive and file that written report.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the report? Hearing none. All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item three, substitute ordinance 10-2023, an ordinance to take effect January 1, 2024 to establish new chapter 781 Automobile Business Operations of the Lakewood Codified Ordinances to establish regulations for automobile-related businesses within the city.
Move to defer. Motion's been made and seconded. Just want to make sure. Are there any public commenters on this? Peace. None. Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none on the motion to defer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item four, report from Public Works and Sustainability Committee meeting held May 22, 2023.
Chairman Rader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dear colleagues, the Public Works and Sustainability Committee meeting -- Committee met on May 22 to discuss the Winterhurst Ice Rink operations agreement. The city is currently in the midst of selecting a new operator for the facility. Director Leininger explained the new model of operation at Winterhurst. He explained that the city will pay the operator a maintenance fee while the rink will be operated at cost. Extra incentives for the operator were also discussed under certain conditions. The legislation authorizing the agreement with the new operator at Winterhurst -- for Winterhurst was planned to be introduced today, and it is being introduced today. I saw later on in the docket, with time for council to deliberate before the June 20th council meeting. As the current lease of Winterhurst expires at the end of June, you know, that's very important. So with all respect, I move to receive and file this communication. Thank you, Mr. President.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that report? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item five, report from Finance Committee meeting held today, June 5, 2023.
Chairman Schachner.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had, let's see, one, two, three, four, or, I'm like to count, four ordinances that we -- one ordinance, three resolutions that we discussed at the Finance Committee this evening. The first ordinance number 14, 2023-14 essentially is our transfer in advances ordinance. What that does is allow us to take money from one area of the budget and move it -- one area of our funds and move it to another so we can pay for things. Very important. That was recommended for approval. The next three resolutions, 2023-24 through 2023-26 are required by the revised code to do several things. The first essentially allows us to levy taxes. So we need to pass this so we can levy taxes so we can keep running as a city. The next allows us to receive property tax payments from the county that they're holding for us as it rolls in, instead of waiting for two particular dates, so we get the money sooner so we can put it to good use. And the final one essentially is required for us to be able to levy property taxes. Director Ricordor noticed that we have not raised the property tax rate since 2003, and I do not believe that there has been an increase in the income tax rate since 1981, was it? Is that right? Okay, since 1981. So no tax increase at all on the city's side for 20 years. Still functioning. With that, with the appropriate amount of respect, I move to receive and file.
Second. Thank you for that report. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item six, ordinance 14, 2023, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing the transfer in advance of certain funds.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item seven, resolution 2023-24, a resolution to take effect immediately approving the tax budget of the city of Lakewood for the year 2024 and authorizing the filing of the same with the Cuyahoga County fiscal officer.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I will just add that that was amended to include the -- an exhibit that included -- what's the real name of it? The schedules, yes.
Tax.
Thank you. Thanks for the help here. So it was fine. It was so as amended, we recommended that version out of the committee.
So to be clear, it was moved out of committee as amended and therefore not needing to be amended here on the floor?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion?
I think it still needs to be amended on the floor.
Okay. Well, I'll amend my motion to recommend adoption as amended.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item eight, resolution 2023-25, a resolution to take effect immediately requesting the Cuyahoga County fiscal officer to draw and the Cuyahoga County Treasurer to pay to the city of Lakewood Director of Finance in advance of all real personal property and special assessments collected in the year 2024 in such amounts as may be requested and available.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item nine, resolution 2023-26, a resolution to take effect immediately accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county fiscal officer.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Bullock.
Just to underscore what Councilman Schachner, as Chair of Finance Committee, said, that the schedule appearing on screen here for property taxes, this is the portion of city -- this is a proposed portion of city taxes for the coming year's property tax, and it once again would maintain a level, not increase, the tax rate. So it's been leveled since 2003, and in 2003, it was only increased a tiny amount for police and fire pensions. So it's Lakewood taxes have been stable on both the income and the property tax side for many, many years, and I think that's something to be proud of. So I'm happy to support the motion.
Spoken as a true former Finance Committee Chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 10, ordinance 11, 2023, an ordinance to take effect immediately to amend Chapter 50513, barking or howling prohibited of the codified ordinances for the purpose of changing the penalty for repeat offenses of this section and adding gender-neutral language.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Just want to once again say how happy I am that this has come forward in the way that it has, and it's important, especially given occurrences in Ward III of Lakewood. But throughout Lakewood, it's so important that this ordinance has come forward, and I applaud the administration for working with Councilmember --
Marx.
Councilmember Marx on bringing it forward. Apologies for -- Yeah, I know. I know. My apology -- appreciation to Councilmember Marx for bringing this forward. Any further discussion? Hearing none. On the motion to adopt, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 11, ordinance 13, 2023, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing and directing the mayor or Director of Planning and Development to enter into an agreement for the sale of 12900 Madison Avenue.
Noting that we do have a meeting scheduled to discuss this matter on the 3rd of July, I'll move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 12, communication from President Litton regarding recodification of ordinances.
Subsequently following this communication is a -- our quarterly codification ordinance. I won't read the communication verbatim, but it's ministerial in nature, and I will move to receive and file this communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 13, ordinance 15, 2023, an ordinance to take effect immediately to approve the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 14, communication from Councilmember Bullock regarding Cuyahoga County Bike/Scooter Share Program update.
Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dear colleagues, as you are aware, the city has paused its participation in the Cuyahoga County Bike/Scooter Share Program whereby residents may temporarily rent scooters from a number of pickup and drop-off locations throughout the city. The effort by the city to thoughtfully pilot the program and then evaluate it has been commendable. During the pilot period of the program, over 11,000 scooter rides took place. The program has promoted the reduction of carbon emissions and improvement of parking congestion in Lakewood. I'm hopeful that council and the administration can work together to troubleshoot and find solutions to make scooter usage successful in our community. To that point, I would like for city council and the public to have the chance to engage in the details on these matters. I welcome the mayor and the administration to join the Housing Planning and Development Committee in discussion of the scooter program and evaluation, along with the ongoing active transportation planning efforts. I intend for this meeting to be scheduled on June 26 or shortly thereafter. Move to refer this communication to the -- well, I suppose the -- this should read, "I will request that this communication be referred to the Housing Planning and Development Committee. Sincerely."
Second.
So I shall now move to receive and file and refer this communication to the Housing Planning and Development Committee.
Officially seconding. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Councilman Rader.
Thank you. I echo my colleagues' thanks to the administration for putting on this pilot. I think it was really, you know, something I certainly supported. And I also, along with many of my neighbors, saw many of the problems with the scooters, and none the least of was the expense of it. It was really expensive, and I think we could absolutely find better providers and better partners to work with us on this last mile. So I commend the councilmen for putting this on. I know the county won't even involve in it, so with your permission, I'd like to invite the county's sustainability department, maybe even the new transportation department, that I know Chris Renee's heading up there at the county. You're probably a step ahead of me there, but I want to make sure that that's on the radar. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Just want to note, sometimes we feel like pilots happen, and they're inevitable, they're fait accompli, that if we do a pilot, we will make something happen automatically, and that's obviously not the case in this instance. And I appreciate the discourse on this important topic that clearly a lot of our residents have had challenges with, and we need to find better ways. Any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion to receive and file and refer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 15, communication from Planning Department regarding Winterhurst Ice Rink operating agreement.
Director Leiniger?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council. As discussed at the Public Works and Sustainability Committee meeting held on May 22, 2023, the city has determined that it is in the best interest of the people of Lakewood, the city, and the users of the Winterhurst Ice Rink to exit the current lease agreement and implement an updated model for operation of the facility. In this updated model, an operator would be selected to operate the Winterhurst Ice Rink on behalf of and report to the city of Lakewood versus the previous model whereby the leasing operated as an independent business within the city-owned facility. On April 21, 2023, eight statements of qualifications were received from potential operators in response to the request for qualifications. With input from the user organizations within the Winterhurst Ice Rink, the city shortlisted four firms to respond to requests for proposal. On May 26, 2023, the shortlisted firms submitted their proposals to operate the Winterhurst Ice Rink. The city, once again with input from the user organizations within the facility, at the time we wrote this, is evaluating and interviewing the four firms in order to make a selection on or before June 5, 2023. Recognizing the evaluation interview process is in progress at the time of this communication, the attached resolution will be substituted with the name of the recommended firm to serve as operator, and the final operating agreement will be provided in advance of the scheduled June 20, 2023 Public Works and Sustainability Committee meeting. In this regard, we request this communication and the forthcoming legislation be referred to the Public Works and Sustainability Committee as previously discussed with city council. And, Mr. President, members of council, as we noted in the communication, we were going to be prepared to share the name of the recommended firm at this first reading here this evening, as we completed our review earlier today. And so with that, after review of the statements of qualifications and proposals, after receiving a tremendous response from eight potential operators, then shortlisting it down to four, we are excited to share that the Lakewood Community ICE will be the recommended as the new operator for Winterhurst. Lakewood Community ICE, if you're not familiar, is a tremendous partnership between Russ Sinkewicz, Mike O'Neill, Tim McCarthy, and Kevin McCarthy. They will bring years of successful experience in rink operation and programming and business management together to lead the next generation of this prized community asset in Winterhurst. And so with that, we will continue to work with Lakewood Community ICE over the next two weeks to negotiate the agreement through our law department and also place that in front of city council on your June 20 meeting.
Move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and I just want to note my appreciation and involvement with some of the discussions related to the operator for Winterhurst Ice Rink. I know it's very important to a number of our residents and different user groups of the ice rink, and I just want to state that I do fully support the decision made by the committee. Knowing many of the operators, all four of the final four, so to speak, are being very qualified, I think, to operate ice rinks, but I think in this instance, us choosing the best option for Lakewood, looking at things on a local level, and I do appreciate all the work that's gone into that. Any further discussion on that motion to receive and file? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 16, resolution 2023-31, a resolution to take effect immediately authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an operating agreement with blank for 14740 Lakewood Heights Boulevard known as Winterhurst Ice Rink.
I'll first move to insert the name Lakewood Community ICE into the blank.
Into the blanks.
Into the blanks in the resolution. Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Bullock.
So of course, the resolution on the docket tonight doesn't include attachment, or rather Exhibit A. Can we maybe just enter into a dialogue with the administration about when we?
I would venture to guess we could get that agreement or potential agreement as soon as possible via email.
So as far as the exact date, we'll provide it to you sometime before June 20.
In advance of June 20, I think.
In advance of the committee meeting. We have a lot of work to do on our side, so this was one huge step in naming the operator. And we have some ideas with the law department, Ernie and his team, of how we'd like to -- what we'd like to put into this agreement, how we'd like to structure it. There was some foresight provided in that that we discussed previously that was in the RFP, but we have a lot of work in front of us to negotiate this over the next couple of weeks, and it's going to take us some time to go through that.
Understood. I want to note the sort of unique nature of this, that, you know, you have an operator, you have a need for usage of that facility in short order, and so it behooves us all to move quickly on this while also being diligent in working on that agreement. So I'm sure the administration will work very hard to have something hammered out as quickly as possible and proceed from there.
As soon as we have it and we can share it, we will share it.
Preferably not an hour before the meeting begins on the 20th. I knew that wouldn't be the case anyway. Just wanted to say. All right. On the motion to insert the name, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes. Move to refer to Public Works and Sustainability Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 17, communication from Public Works, Director Gordon, regarding traffic signal improvements.
Director Gordon.
Thank you, dear President Litton, members of city council. The above referenced project entails improvements to the Noaka eligible traffic signals located at the following five intersections: Warren and City Center, Warren and Athens, McKinley and South Marginal, McKinley and North Marginal, and McKinley and Riverside. Preliminary engineering and traffic counts have been completed. The design work would begin in 2024 or sooner and would go through ODOT's local let process, and construction would begin the last quarter of 2027 or sooner. The work would include the installation of new traffic signals with poles and mast arms, new controllers, radar detection for turning movements, ADA accessible pedestrian controllers, and other apparatuses. Excuse me. The attached resolution is required in order to move forward with the application. The project's estimated costs are $1,348,586, and we've requested $848,000 in Noaka grant funds, with the city's contribution being $500,586. I request that council approve the attached resolution by the June 20, 23 meeting, such that the application can be processed. Please let me know if you have any further questions.
You state the June 20 date as being important. I'll move to refer to Public Works and Sustainability, knowing that they're meeting that evening, and we could hopefully adopt, potentially adopt, anyway, at the council meeting thereafter.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Bullock.
Director Gordon, I don't know if you'll know this off the top of your head, but I -- first of all, thank you for the detailed outline, and I look forward to committee discussion. Second, I do recall that we've been doing traffic signal improvements for quite some time. I guess this is face, we've done it five times previously. Have we already done these, and we're coming back around for yet another improvement, since these are major intersections? I seem to recall that we might, because I don't recall. I picture in my mind's eye, these intersections, except perhaps Warren and Athens, they already have mast arms and relatively moderate signals, don't they?
So these were all the ones that met traffic warrant with Noaka, and the traffic studies were done to make them eligible. So that's the best way I could put it, that these are the most eligible locations.
Okay. I look forward to learning more. It always amazes me how expensive the equipment is, but on the other hand, you know, safety and being able to time optimally the traffic patterns, those are all critical functions, so.
Yeah, and the traffic studies have all been done with these locations as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Well said, councilman. Share some of those sentiments. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 18, resolution 2023-32, a resolution to take effect immediately authorizing the city engineer to prepare and execute an application for congestion mitigation and air quality funds for the stated described project, and to submit the same to the Northeast Area Wide Coordinating Agency for consideration of funding by Ohio Association of Regional Councils on behalf of Lakewood.
Move to refer to Public Works and Sustainability Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? They'll have a tight docket on the 20th, to be sure. Hearing no further discussion. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 19, communication from Planning Department regarding amended fiscal year 23 HUD Annual Action Plan.
Director Leiniger.
Good evening again, council president-led members of council. And first of all, just to clarify, in the previous item for Winterhurst, I spoke, I may have said Mike O'Neill. It's Mike McNeil. My notes said Mike Mail, and I think I said O'Neill. So slight difference, but important difference.
Lot of Irish names.
Lot of Irish names. So back to this item. On February 27, 2023, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development informed the city of Lakewood regarding its 2023 Community Development Block Grant and Emergency Solutions Grant funding awards, which were $1,881,377 and $167,030, respectively. Because Lakewood's HUD Annual Action Plan cannot be submitted until the actual funding awards are announced, and the city must adopt budget legislation prior to the end of the current fiscal year in December, the allocation recommendations approved by the Lakewood Citizens Advisory Committee, included as Exhibit A to Resolution 22-55, which authorizes merril submission of the action plan to HUD, are based on estimated 2023 funding levels of $1,850,358 and $160,000, respectively, for CDPG and ESG. Now that Lakewood's actual funding awards have been announced, the FY23 Action Plan Resolution must be amended to include these amounts. To minimize disruption and to avoid duplication of effort by grantees, HUD recommends that contingency provisions be adopted as are attached to the city's approach in aligning estimated allocations with actual funding awards once they are known. Approved by CAC on September 21, 2022, these guidelines were utilized to distribute the extra $31,019 in CDPG dollars and the extra $7,030 in ESG dollars received by city estimates as depicted in Exhibit A1 that's attached to the amended resolution. We respectfully submit for your consideration the Department of Planning and Development's amended FY23 Annual Action Plan Resolution and the CAC's final actual FY23 CDPG and ESG allocation recommendations. Typically, we treat this as an order of business to housekeeping, if you will, to clean up the previous ordinance that was adopted. However, if city council prefers, this can be recommended to a committee of your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'll first move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any? Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion or questions for Director Lineiger?
Mr. President?
Councilman Bullock.
Just say, Dan Wyman is a pretty good predictor. It's almost exactly on the nose, so if he wants to pick any horses or something, let me know.
Well said. We do appreciate Dan Wyman's work, as well as Director Lineiger, of course. Any further discussion on the motion? Councilman Rader?
Not this motion. I guess I should wait, but I will say that I read through, and I agree with the allocations. We'd be fine with passage sooner than later.
Likewise. Any further discussion? Hearing none on that motion to receive and file. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 20, Resolution 2022-55A, resolution to take effect immediately amending Resolution 2022-55 adopted December 19, 2022, authorizing and directing the mayor to submit the fiscal year 2023 one-year action plan of the fiscal year 20 to fiscal year 24/5 year consolidated plan, which includes dollar allocations and activities to be funded with federal CDPG, ESG, and home resources, as well as any other entitlement funds received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, all amendments thereto, and all understandings and assurances contained therein, and incorporates the city's application to HUD for fiscal year 2023 CDPG, ESG, and home funds.
Given the near-perfect accuracy of our estimated allocation and our actual allocation, and I think these changes being in keeping with the spirit of our CAC, our Citizens Advisory Committee and their recommendations, I will move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And that motion passes. And with that, we are to the conclusion of our docket for this evening. Is there anyone We have two individuals signed in for public comment this evening, first of which is Carlos Castells. And if I mispronounce anything, please correct me upon arrival at the podium there. Please state your name and address for the record as well. Let's make sure that microphone works, too. Chief Doubles is a IT expert.
Thank you. Carlos Castells, 1170 Summit Avenue. I've been here 29 years. You pronunciated it correctly. Thank you. I'm here to speak about the circulator. We spoke about it at the last meeting. I'd like to direct council's attention to the May 31 edition of Scene Magazine. It's on the street right now. It's not hard to get. An article entitled "Cleveland Wants to Be a 15-Minute City." It's about a 10-minute read. It is about Cleveland, and it's mostly about zoning, specifically parking requirements, but the idea of a 15-minute city heavily involves non-automobile transit alternatives, such as walking, biking, and bus or rail, with the goal of citizens being able to reach amenities of life, grocery store, daycare, dentist, pharmacy, bank, within 15 minutes without a car. I think this would be a worthy goal of Lakewood. But one thing about the way 15-minute cities are supposed to work, transit has to go past a given point every 15 minutes. There are times of day when the 26 bus might do this, not so much the 55, Clifton, 25 Madison, or 83 in Warren. Plus, you can't get from Detroit to Madison unless you happen to live close to Warren. The circulator, which we did talk about at the last meeting, would fill this gap. I don't think this is pie in the sky, but achievable if Lakewood aspires to be the kind of, to this kind of urban planning network. I'd like to also read a statement of Sharon Hogan, who's my wife. Some of this was said at the last month's meeting. I apologize for redundancy. The advantages of having a community circulator: many people with limited funds can get to businesses, services, and recreation easily and affordably. This would include children and others who do not have driver's license or access to cars. The circulator could coordinate with the public and private schools to provide alternative ways for students to access their schools. It is likely the circulator would be used by most students with special needs or other reasons to attend school farther from their homes for specialized program or alternative educational opportunities that would otherwise be difficult to reach. I think this option would improve attendance and educational outcomes for low-income immigrant and single-parent families. Finally, people who prefer not to seek out and pay for parking, and those who prefer to be car-free for a variety of reasons, could opt for the circulator. This may include the disabled. Those who wish to drink and those who wish to reduce their carbon footprint would be likely to use the circulator. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to note my appreciation for your joining us this evening and speaking up. I personally, given the interest in this topic, have reached out to some RTA board members, whom I am acquainted, and I know the administration is working diligently to find solutions. I don't think the idea is pie in the sky, though. I know that there's a lot we need to work out as well, and I believe that we're working towards some solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Next up to speak is, I believe it's Megan Denman.
Thank you for the chance to speak. I'm going to speak on the same topic, so I also apologize for redundancy. As I had said at the last meeting...
Forgive me. Name and address for the record.
Oh, yes. Megan Denman. My address is 12520 Edgewater Drive, number 907, and that's Lakewood. As I said last meeting, the circulator bus system would greatly benefit so many people in Lakewood, especially our senior citizens, those with disabilities, our youth and lower-income individuals who don't own cars. As one Lakewood resident at last meeting, Larice, had spoken as an immigrant, she at first did not have a car and would have really benefited from something like the circulator system. And so again, it would benefit immigrants and refugees settling in the area. They would have increased mobility. I think that scooters and bikes are also important, especially for reducing emissions and for perhaps younger generations who can use them easily, and that's definitely a good solution. But for larger families with young kids or seniors or those with disabilities, that might not work. And obviously, with winter weather, that limits the feasibility of that. So again, I think circulators are important here. Some examples of successful ones in Carbondale, Colorado, they have a circulator program that has a 15-minute loop to local stops in the city. It's free. It connects residents from park-and-ride to local destinations in the city and to other public transportation connection points. The Seattle has a program called the Solid Ground Circulator Program that has a 30-minute loop around the city. It's free and ADA accessible, and their motto is "Building Community to End Poverty." Stops are near public health and service locations. And lastly, I'd just say that I had made a Facebook post, May 6, I believe the date was, just about circulating interest in the circulator, and it got 166 likes and 83 comments, which is only a snapshot, obviously, but it shows you that I'm not the only one excited about this, obviously, and I know there's already talk going on, so I just wanted to reinforce that. Thank you.
Ms. Denman, thank you for your comments. We appreciate you joining us this evening. And again, you know, this is something I think we've been talking about in Lakewood for at least as long as I've been running for office eight years ago, as something that's been important to our residents and something we've been able to, we've been seeking to bring back, and we may be able to have that conversation here in short order as well. That concludes our public comment for this evening. Any comments from my colleagues? Or updates or announcements? Okay. Any from the administration? Director?
Just wanted to let everybody know about Foster Pool opening on Thursday. Very exciting time for the city, so certainly hope to see everybody out there barring any unforeseen circumstances. So, thank you.
All right. That's exciting. I also note that we had a robust showing at Meet the Trucks this past weekend. I know Councilman Shachner was there to enjoy it. I don't know if any others were, but it looked like it was a well-attended event and always a highlight for the children of Lakewood and beyond. Any further updates or comments? Hearing none, I'll move to adjourn. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? That motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.